The Westford Select Board meeting of Tuesday, March 12th, 2024. We'll start tonight with the pledge allegiance led by Andrea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sit down. So again, for the benefit of those who are online or here, we have been recorded tonight, so that's a fair warning up front, as with all of our meetings. With that, we've got to move to open forum. If anybody has anything from the board for open forum announcements? Kristen?
I don't have anything this evening.
Anything from China? Anything from Trinidad, Tom?
No.
And next from the, from the audience? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Megan O'Connell, 44 South Chelmsford Road. I stand here to voice my opposition to the proposed Article 18, the MBTA's zone and overlay, and urge the Select Board to recommend a no vote to the current proposal. Article 18 proposes a district that could add 4,800 high-density units, 50% increase in the current Westford housing stock units. We're all aware of the $6.8 million override that will be voted on at town meeting in a week and a half, and then the town election's on May 7th. We should all be aware also that one of the drivers of the budget issues is the school district, which accounts for one and a half of every dollar spent in town. In 2018, Westford collected 14% of our tax revenues from commercial industrial properties. In 2023, that went down to 11%. This year, it's down to 10%. And why does that matter? Because it's the commercial industrial properties that subsidize the residents. Expanding the commercial and industrial base back to the 14% level alone would bring in an additional $4 million in tax revenue. Instead, the MBTA overlay proposed will erode the commercial base even more, potentially eliminating another 18% of the current commercial tax base. Take the Princeton Apartments as representative example. It has 200 units, houses 76 students, pays a total of $600,000 per year in taxes. That's $7,900 per student, while our cost per student is about $16,000 per student. The presence of Princeton in effect costs the town over $600,000 per year more than it brings in taxes. The MBTA overlay provides for 4,800 high-density units. That's the equivalent of 24 Princeton apartment complexes. That means up to an additional 1,800 students, but more to the point, an additional loss to the town of over $14 million per year. That is not smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Open forum?
Open forum, yeah. Maybe if, if, okay, if we're discussing things like the override, that that's later on the agenda, so I'm trying to keep the open forum to things that aren't actually on the agenda elsewhere.
A little out of breath. Chris Kunst, Texas Road. I'd like to bring to the attention of the Select Board again a request to put a button on the website about public hearings. I know you're going to talk later tonight, and so I won't discuss the issues of it, about the trees being cut to put in the new sidewalks and so forth, on Plain Road and Boston Road and elsewhere. I just learned about this, this morning, when I was looking at the packet. I didn't hear anything about it, and I know if I wanted to subscribe to all the different town committees and all the different groups and so forth, I could get inundated with all the notices and hear about the public hearings. But that's not how life is. That's not how, how we can really, really react. I heard that there were public notices put up on the trees. That's the last place, as a citizen in Westford, I would look to find a public hearing notice. Most people don't get the Lowell Sun. I heard they were in the Lowell Sun. And I heard that, I saw that the notice that did apparently appear somewhere, I don't even know where it appeared, talked about a hearing being held on Friday, March 1st, I guess it was, which is a Friday, at 9:00 AM, which is an odd time, so people, if they heard about it in advance, should have been having advanced notice about it so they could be there, because they might have to shuffle their work schedules or other. And it was also held at the Highway Garage. I think when I, when I think of going to a public hearing, I think it's going to be here, or at the Millennium School, or, you know, someplace a little more public. That's all fine and dandy, but the issue is really the communication, and I know everyone is working very hard at increasing communication to the citizens. We really need a button on the website where people can go and see what upcoming public hearings are happening in town, where citizens can provide their input and feedback and know what's going on, that it may impact the future. Thank you.
Thanks. Kyle, did you want to, or you could just, being a gentleman, okay, I thought you were getting F. Okay, Diane?
Thanks. Diane Wood, going horse, 122 Depot. Just a plug for Thursday night's League of Women's Annual Town Preview starts at 7:30. For those of you who want to listen to and get an opportunity to address the articles that are in this year's warrant, 7:30, check out the League's website and register, you know, for, for the session. It's, it's being held online, so via Zoom. So please take the opportunity for more of an informal atmosphere to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Diane, is it only online?
Yes.
Okay, just so folks know that it's only online.
Yes, online only.
Yes, Paul?
Paul Fassbender, Texas Road. I missed your introduction. I know, I guess you don't want to talk about override issues in detail.
We have later on, so yeah, but it's.
Okay, I'd just like to give a heads up to the folks at home and my fellow taxpayers that I was informed about an issue with the online calculator today for the override, and please tune into the later part of the, of the meeting when hopefully we'll talk about it.
Actually, was, is that, when it's, just now, Kristen, or do you know about this?
Um, I don't know what the issue is. I know that we created an online tax calculator.
This, this is appropriate to bring up now, then, because this is, well, yeah, but this is, this is not really a debate on a, a topic. This is something the town maybe have accurate or not.
Basically, I was informed today by a couple of people that they were having some confusion over using the calculator that's online. So I went in and tried it with my own information, and I did send a summary note to you and Dan and Mike Wells, requesting that somebody look at it. Basically, the way it's set up now is you put in your street address, and it gives you a two-line output. The first line basically says override zero, and then the next line says override 6.8 million. Then a, a column later on says your tax will be, and there are two numbers. In my case, the number that was in for a zero override happened to be exactly my property tax for FY '24. My assumption is that that should have been my tax with zero override for FY '25, and the line below it would be my tax with the override for FY '25. And I think a lot of people who look at the calculator will interpret it that way. My guess is that that's not accurate, because if that was the case, my tax for FY '25 would be identical to my tax for FY '24. And as much as I would like to believe that will happen, I think that's just too good to be true. I suspect that whatever that line is, is not explained well to people, and they may assume what I did, which is that will be their tax if there's no override.
So I under, I understand your, your concern. This is for, we have not set the tax rate for '25, so it is based upon '24 values, so we'll try to add some additional explainer language.
Well, either that or just take out that top line and say you're only calculating the incremental from whatever the tax will be next year, because people will, you know, be tempted to think, oh, my tax isn't going up next year.
So this would be a ta, right, I, I understand your.
So I would recommend that you either take that line out, take the calculator away, and put in the, the multiple examples that were in one of the previous handouts that show by house value what's going to happen, that shows Prop 2 and 1/2, override, excluded debt, and CPA, because that, that's much more useful for a resident or taxpayer to figure out what we're getting into, trying to become informed voters for town meeting.
We'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
I'm not sure if you're retired from being a Q expert or a, or an editor, but thank you. Your, your teacher details great.
Actually, I volunteer with other non, with some nonprofits, and I do both still.
Okay, very good, thanks. Anything else? Okay, with that, moving right along to the consent agenda, and this, as we're aware, Tom is traveling tonight, so he's got his handsome face, but we're doing all of our calls by, by, all of our votes by roll call, because we have to with, with one member being absent from the meeting itself. With that, so the consent agenda, first, a special license for Easter egg hunt and celebration. Applicant is Sandra Hobbie, March 30th, 2024, from 10:00 to 2 p, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Good Picking Farm, Number 6 School Road. Secondly, a street or road closure for the Leta Methodist Church Easter Celebration. Applicant is David Welsh. Location is Church Street from Broadway Street to School Lane, March 24th, 2024, from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And then banner requests, first, an apple blossom parade request for, from the Kiwanis Club for May 10th through May 20th, 2024, in front of First Parish Church. Secondly, the annual town election. Applicant is the Town Manager's Office, April 30th through May 9th, just display dates, again, in front of First Parish. And the Acton Westford Pride Event 2024. Applicant is Wendy Lloyd, dates June 7th through the 17th, 2024, in front of the Abbott School. And finally, a flag raising. This is on the common for Pride Month. It'll be the Pride Flag. Applicant is the LGBTQ friends and allies group. This will be a one-day event only on June 15th, and we have the town, the temporary flag polls that we use for India's Independence Day. We'll use those again for, for this. So any discussion from the board?
Move to approve?
Second.
Well, I'm sorry, I had a question. Do you mind if I, so do we typically put banners at the Abbott School, or is that, that is a normal process?
Yeah, when we, when they're, it's the secondary location, and you can't do it in front of the parish church.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, any comments from the audience that'd be online? Okay, on favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So, thank you. Next, a request from the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee to use the Westford Town Seal on literature advertising the Acton Westford Pride Event 2024. And Wendy is here, and I think also, you're speaking, you're just here to give more support.
Yeah.
You can, you can both come up if you want.
If needed, yeah, I will speak, I will join in, but Wendy has more details. Thank you for the opportunity.
Do you want the presentation up, or do you just want to?
I think I'll just.
Speak.
Speak to it.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So we would, we, the Westford LGBTQ group has been in talks with.
I don't mean to inter, there is a, a hand up online. I didn't see it before. I don't know if it's regarding the last matter or not. I just wanted to let you know, you can make the.
I guess this, 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 or.
So Cynthia King.
Is this, is this, can I ask you, okay, Cynthia, is this relate to their current discussion or to the prior discussion?
I would like to comment on what's being presented now, so I.
Okay, let's.
Let Wendy and them say what they want to, and then I'd like to make her comment.
Fair enough, thank you. Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
So back to you again. Sorry.
I apologize. I would like to show a co, a slide or two, if that's okay. I am on. Okay, thank you. Is that the full set I sent you?
It's five, five slides.
Five slides, okay, so, since we have gone, you've already done it, could you advance to slide three? Okay. So it would be, we are requesting to use the Westford Seal next to the Acton Town Seal for the Acton Westford Pride. Acton did their own pride last year, and this year they want to make it a town event, so they've gotten their DEI in town involved, and they want to use the town seal. So they, in partnership, they asked if Westford would allow the town seal to be shown on that, the flyer. So I just did a mock-up of what that would look like. I went before the DEI committee, and we've been working on initiatives to try to bring in different parts of the, the community for visibility and to be recognized by the community. And the DEI committee voted and, and gave us, and Acton approval or endorsement to use that.
So we, we did, a DEI committee came together, and we voted that we would support utilizing, if you guys approve, to use the Westford Town Stamp on this particular newsletter or the flyer that is being used. There is a director of DEI, formal DEI director in Acton who we are working with. Directly, we have set up some time, co-chairs of the DEI committee have set up some time to talk with them so that we can collaborate in the future events as well. Talking about this particular event, we have voted in support of, again, requesting the Select Board to vote again and support so that we can give the permission to the Acton Committee, Acton Select Board to include the Westford Town Seal. If you guys are okay with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any other, you, you, I looked at five slides. Are you done, or?
Yeah, no, the other one, we're in the support of, I'm just speaking on behalf of Wendy, right?
I, I have a little bit more information if it's needed. I just don't want to overwhelm the issue.
I said, so there's two important points, which I think we really answered. So first, the D, the Ta, Westford's DEI has said they would support this initiative, correct?
Yes, correct. We voted yes.
So we have a town agency saying they, they would approve of the use. And then secondly, Mr. Dawson, to clear up any misconceptions, there, there is some fee for this, which is not being paid for by Westford's taxpayers, correct?
Exactly. It's been fundraised by Westford LGBTQ.
Right, just to make sure, okay, so just, people, there's no town money involved in this.
No town money, no.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, John?
Well, I, I, we've supported this with the flag raising and the banner, and we've shown our support in that. I don't think I'm in favor of adding the town seal to the flyer. It's something that's going to happen in Acton. It's not necessarily an official event or an official action of the town. It is for a private banner or a nonprofit organization. So I'm not in favor of doing, putting a seal on that.
So I respectfully disagree. The town of Acton has asked if the town of Westwood would participate in this with them as sort of, well, call it regional, because it's only two communities, but certainly a, a community, a mutual community event. And we have a DEI committee who has looked into this, who is working with Acton and who supports this. I think that in terms of Westford being a welcoming and diversified community that we bill ourselves to be, that this is something that for a group of our citizens and our residents, that we should be involved in and support, and so I would support this.
Just wanted to make some comments, and thank you, Andrea. There are multiple towns who are planning to have their own events, so Box Bowl, Little Town, many other towns are going to have their own events to support the Pride Month, whereas Westford is not going to have any of the private event just for the Westford, and henceforth, the request is to collaborate with Acton and kind of work with them to have that event in Nara Park. Nara Park is very much commutable, very close by. When we will have the banners, then the residents are encouraged to go and participate in that particular event.
And maybe next year, we'll have our own event.
And, John, I know you mentioned the two that, items that were passed. One of those will be nixed. There will be no reason to support a, put up a banner adverti, advertising the Acton Westford Pride. So it will, if we are not having an Acton Westford Pride, supported by Westford.
Why would you not put the banner up and not raise, you're still going to raise the flag?
Because Acton may not want to continue with Westford if we're not in partnership.
That's fine.
So that's a, that's a, so that's a condition of the partnership, then?
They would like us to be partners in it as towns.
Chris?
So I'm not familiar with the group, I believe, that you're representing that has approached the DEI committee. Can you just speak a little bit about that group and what its charter is and goals and the community, what it's done to date?
Sure. So the Westford LGBTQ group is mainly on Facebook, and it's a way for the Westford community to spread information as any other things on social media and provide support to each other in things going on around town and with legislation that might affect LGBTQ folks. And we also have a lot of allies also in that group that advertise the other things in Westford, such as bake sales, craft events. So it's, it's a wide, wide-ranging Westford group of LGBTQ and allies.
Are you a registered charity or just a loose?
Right now, we are not a 501(c)(3). I am working with folks to see about getting that established, but it is, it hasn't been accomplished yet.
I mean, I, my personal feeling is I think this is a great idea. I, I like where this is heading. My concern is that, and I'm, you know, I'm not smearing anybody in your organization, they may all be great, but if you do have some bad actors, for whatever reason, and they are representing the town of Westford in some capacity now through this endorsement, what do we do, right? There's no, as a charity, you know, you at least you have some board of directors, you have usually director's insurance, you have some ability to take on liability if something goes wrong, but your organization has nothing. So where does liability fall if something happens to go miss?
Well, with all due respect, isn't that Acton's problem? If it's in, if it's in Acton.
I don't know. I'm just raising the question. I don't know the answer to, so maybe that's not a concern. I'm just bringing it up.
Okay, John, and then we'll.
Yeah.
Cynthia King, remember something?
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah, but don't get me wrong, I support the, the flag raising, and I support the banner, and I support your organization. It's just I don't think the, the town seal should be used at that point for that. I mean, yes, that has an official connotation, and in some towns I know, they say it's for official documents and, and should be used, and permission to use it should be used with caution. And we also had an opinion, a legal opinion that said, be careful with this, because it opens the doors to other organizations that don't have an official tie with the town, that could get permission to get the banner and stuff, but also would want to do the seal also. So it's, it's opening up a little bit of a door there for that. So it's just the use of the seal that I'm concerned about, and not, not the organization that you belong to.
So just to be clear, so I, I asked for that opinion, and that's, and I was concerned because, yes, with, I was setting a precedent that we could use the seal for any private organization, and that's why I supposedly asked if DEI endorsed, if a town committee were to endorse it, then it is now a town sanctioned event. So that was my first point. Secondly was, there is no town money. And then thirdly, yeah, there is that, that slope of, once we say yes to this event, then we are open to requests from other events, and my opinion there is, June has been declared by the US Congress as Gay Pride Month, so I think we're covered, because we are supporting an event that has the, if, if mature, I guess, of the US Congress. It's not like we're going to have some fringe group come to us with that kind of backing. We can say no in the future if they don't have that kind of a, of a pedigree. That was my rational, rationalities from a.
Oh, okay.
That's just my opinion, that's.
Yeah, okay, you know, I, I, I respect that, yes, okay.
Now, Tom, do you have anything to add, or?
Just that I'm in support of fixing the seal for this. I think it's one more way we can demonstrate the values of the community of being inclusive. And I, and I appreciate Scott, the thoughtful sort of background checks that you did. I think it's important that we did that, and I feel comfortable endorsing it.
So, so sorry, I think we're done here, so Cynthia or anybody else that wants to come forward again, but we'll take Cynthia first. She's had her hand up from the first, first minute.
So Cynthia, you're on.
Okay, thank you. I, I want to say first that I am a member of the DEI committee, and I voted against doing this. And my concern was that Acton offers a drag show on Friday night, so it's, even though when I questioned Wendy about it, that that, this would just be for Saturday, it's packaged as a drag show on Friday night. It is adults only, but personally, I, I don't think that that's something that the community should sponsor and recommend. And then the other piece was, I had asked about what the events were and who is going to be there, and she didn't have that information. And I did speak to Michelle, who's running it in Acton, and she, again, did not give me anybody that was going to be on the tables or what they're doing. And she said she hadn't contacted anybody yet. But I did talk to Wendy. One of my concerns is, it's, this organization, I don't know, it's sat out with a small group, and it continues to expand and expand. And part of that is Black Lives Matter, transgender, and we're seeing transgender being promoted to schoolchildren. And ethically and medically, I can't see promoting that. And I had asked if there was going to be literature like that at the event. And Wendy didn't, maybe you can comment on it now, too, Wendy, but she seemed to indicate that there would be, but there was nothing here about what's being possible to us. And, and so I really can't recommend doing that unless we knew more what was there, and I definitely would not recommend the Westford Seal being put on this event. I, I think it should, and another issue is that this, this event is being offered on the same day as the Strawberry Festival. So Westford is promoting the Strawberry Festival, and yet this is another event going on in a different town. So there's, you know, that's all I have to say.
So I'll let Wendy respond, and I'll.
Okay, there's several things to unpack there. I'm, I'm not sure how Black Lives Matter and transgender, what the complication, first of all, Black Lives Matter has nothing to do with LGBTQ, except that there may be people of color that also are of the LGBTQ community, so we have intersections of minority ship. Transgender will likely be mentioned in LGBT, that's the T of the LGBTQ. We welcome that part of the community, and that is part of our brother and sisterhood. Currently, in, in the ALC, you mentions that there are 478 anti-LGBTQs bills actively being legislated, anti-LGBTQ bills being legislated in the US right now. And it is a time, I believe, where the LGBTQ community needs to have support and feel a welcoming, to see a flag raised, to see a pride event. to feel like we belong and that we aren't asked to keep to the shadows because it makes some people feel uncomfortable.
Can I, can we answer on the question where she said that Cynthia, the questions were, what would, what will be the activities actually in there? And those questions were answered. The question, basically, there are activities on the flyer that indicate there will be children's activities, arts and crafts, and we did offer Cynthia to look at the flyer. So those questions were answered, if, if that question is again coming up from you. Talking about will there be a drag show? It was discussed that there is no adult show going on on Saturday when we are asking the town seal to be on the flyer. If there is any show that is on a Friday, separate event, has nothing to do with this event that we are looking to support. So again, coming back to this question and request is we are requesting a town seal on the flyer for the event, which is a family-friendly event that only has kids' activities and whatnot. So there will be tables from many nonprofit organizations, there will be activities, but at the same time, what we are not aware of, if there will be any content that is not suitable for the kids because it is supposedly a kids-friendly event. Happy to answer any of the questions.
John.
So you're saying the seal would only be used on the flyer for the Saturday event?
Yes.
And that's the only, is that the only joint event between Westford?
Yes.
I'm still having trouble understanding that if we don't put the seal on it, that you're not invited or that you don't wanna put up the banner and you don't wanna put up the flag?
If we don't, my understanding is if we don't put the seal on it, it will not be an Acton-Westford event. I believe that the DEI, we as a DEI committee could have a table there and offer information or whatever, but it will not be an Acton-Westford event. It will simply be an Acton Pride event.
And there were some miscommunications on the drag show event. It is not an adult thing, it's, it's ninth grade and above.
But it has nothing to do with.
It has nothing, it has nothing to do with this event, no. And again, when, when the question comes, comes down about whether Michelle, I believe that Cynthia was referring to Michelle, who's the director of DEI in Acton.
I'm not familiar with.
Who Michelle is, I have no idea.
Who Michelle is, but we are early in planning, so we don't have vendors because we, we have to do this part before we can ask for the vendors and people who wanna host tables.
And Acton, Acton Director has reached out to the DEI committee asking if there is a support from the select board from the town or not. So we want to go and go to the partnership after having this vote being passed tonight.
So Cynthia, your hand.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, so your hand's, your hand is still up.
When I, when I spoke to Michelle, now this event is happening in Acton. They did it last year. They should have had a list of people that participated in the event and what was being represented at, at the event. So my concern, and again, is that, you know, children are at this event. What are they, what are they being projected? And also the drag show associated with it. I don't feel that Westford, even though the drag show is Friday night and the, the Pride event is in the afternoon the next day, it's still packaged as a weekend event. And I don't feel that Westford seal should be on anything associated with drag shows. And then I would really wanna see who's participating in the event in the afternoon. And, and Acton should have that list.
Okay, so thanks, so Gloria?
Hi, Gloria Miller, fourteen Hutchins Way. I am speaking as a resident. I applaud the efforts of Wendy and this group. I just recently learned about them. I have not been involved with them previously. I also applaud Town DEI for supporting their efforts. I am speaking as a resident and as a rainbow mom. And all of my children, now adults, have attended drag shows. They're not scary, they're wonderful, they're fantastic events. And frankly, the only thing that has worried or bothered me about it is they didn't invite me. But one of the things my kids have taught me is there is a tradition in the LGBT community. In the faces of fear and hate, you turn your back to it and you raise your umbrella. When fear and hate comes calling, you turn your back to it and you raise your rainbow umbrella and you proudly fly your colors. I would encourage you to turn your back on fear and hate. Support inclusion, support the town committee that has voted in favor of this. And please, send the right message to the LGBT families of Westford and send the right message to my kids and the other LGBT youth of Westford. Thank you.
I believe I made a motion.
Yes, is there a, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think all the hands on line besides.
No.
So we have a motion and a second. Anybody else wanna speak last chance? Okay, going once, twice, sold. All in favor, Chris.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, you have a request from Burton's Grill to change the hours of their liquor license. Who is speaking to that, because Gloria's not here?
It's not me.
It's, I was just gonna say, is it you anymore, Patty?
However, I can tell you it's an easy change and it's just, you can let them open at ten.
Yeah, they wanna open Saturdays and Sundays at ten thirty AM for brunch service.
So there's no change to the license, just to change the hours?
Yeah, ours, that is correct.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
On favor, John.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
And I. Next, to recognize Neurodiversity Week as March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four to March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. We have tonight our, I think, believe chair and vice chair of the Commission on Disabilities. I think maybe the youngest chair in town history. So. So, you're welcome to, just tell, somebody just tell us who you are, your address, and then, and then, same with Catherine, we don't kinda hoon you, but then go ahead.
So Catherine Clear, I'm now the Chair of Commission on Disability and this is.
Matty and I am Vice Chair on Commission on Disability.
And we also have Melissa Mackey in the audience with us tonight, who is the Chair of the CPAC Board in Westford. And for anyone who doesn't know, the CPAC is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. That's why we need the anagram, that's quite a lot. Chris, I, I, yeah, we just wanted to come and speak to you tonight, really to bring awareness and for something you've already voted on. Matty came to school committee last year and did this presentation. And when he left, we were speaking about, I think we need to do this for select boards this year because the whole point of raising awareness for Neurodiversity Week is that it's a full community effort. And so we wanted to give some of this information to you tonight as town leaders as you go forth and make decisions and our leaders within our community. So it's very short, we won't keep you long, but we just think it's really important to share this information. So this year, March eighteenth to twenty-fourth is Neurodiversity Celebration Week. It's a global initiative. And, Kristen, I don't know if you want to just click on, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. And I'm not gonna read off, off, off the slides, but really, we're talking about what is neurodiversity and to kind of put everybody on the same page. Neurodiversity is a term, it was coined by an Australian sociologist, really to kind of, as an umbrella term for anyone that has autism, ADHD, dyslexia, learning disorder, Tourette's Syndrome, and to really kind of speak about how no two brains are alike and that they all work differently and that there's no wrong way of a brain working. And they all have strengths in, in the differences and to embrace them and to be encouraged. So that's just a slide again to show just some of the various kind of neurodiverse brains that we have. And what is Neurodiversity Celebration Week? This is the amazing thing. This was started in twenty eighteen by a sixteen-year-old girl in the United Kingdom. It's a worldwide initiative that she's brought on and she herself has ADHD, autism, and I think a language learning disability. And the whole point of it is to change people's perceptions about neurodiverse people and understand how in schools they learn, how in the workplace they work, and to not judge them based on differences. So Matty, this is up to you.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I, I am Matty. So, so as a person, and so my strengths, let me start by saying, saying is, I'm resilient, I am a people person, I connect with people a lot. I'm upbeat and I am creative in my ways. I do have TS, Tourette's Syndrome, so it is, I am neurodiverse. I have challenges with learning, some, something called executive function, which is.
Organizations.
Organizations, yeah. And processing, yeah. And all that jazz. And, and, and it makes it hard for me to really stay on track. And I veer off a little here and there, more than not. So, so, and, and, and then, and then these challenges can really make it hard and difficult for me to, to learn and.
But the one thing I have to say as well, that I, Matty doesn't toot his own horn very well, is having worked with Matty now and known him for over a year, what I've since discovered, when he says creative, he's, he's not lying. His writing skills are phenomenal and how he expresses himself, and we've spoken about this, verbally, you may not think he expresses himself in the same way. When you read his writing, the eloquency and the thoughtfulness and mindfulness is phenomenal.
Yeah.
And, and he's very creative in terms of photography and media. And I think that's what we're, we're trying to show is that, you know, you may not present in an interview, but you may actually have the skills to really do a job. And I think that's one of the reasons we wanted to, to speak tonight. And Matty, for anybody to know as well, is working with the Tourette's Association, the national, as an advocate.
Yes.
He's been doing a number of talks nationally. You did one with the Homeland Security.
Yes, yes, and a couple, sorry.
No, no.
And in a couple of school ones, I've been out in schools and, and I'm doing one in Dallas, Texas this summer, so.
So he's really out there advocating for Tourette's, but also neurodiversity. So, changing the community for the better, this is, this is really why I'm here with you guys tonight. And what makes a community welcoming for, for neurodiverse individuals?
So.
Go for it, Matty, this is you.
So, so good, so it matters, like, like there's good people, or I should say, you need good people and, and good organizations and that embrace neurodiversity. It's good to see neurodiversity, it's good to have an outlook where neurodiverse people are just like regular people, but they, they're different and different isn't always bad. And, and having opportunities and, and organization, organizations and people who support and surround you and you is very important. Another important thing, thing, other opportunities to themselves, well, to engage in the community, whether it's, whether it's just more, more like, more programs and more like, like, say for example, like, like just places where neurodiverse students and people can, can come together and, and actually feel like they're part of something. Too many people will, will look down upon neurodiversity, which, which in my opinion, and I'm sure Catherine can agree to this, is, is it something you, you might wanna, you, you should look up upon? Because it's, it's as, as neurodiverse verse, as I'm neurodiverse, it, it, having a community and having family that, that, and having peers and all these people and teachers and, and just people that surround me is like a big part of my success. And, and it's really important to be successful and especially, you would wanna be successful, even if you're neurodiverse, 'cause everyone has, needs a, a chance to be seen and to be heard. Town leaders who are, and the other thing, thing is, town leaders is need to, who are, who are NDA aware, who are neurodiverse aware, will create, should create equitable positions and opportunities such as some more.
Commission on Disability.
Commission on Disability, yeah, more commissions, maybe more.
Opportunities as opposed to volunteering and.
Yeah, yeah.
And engage with community organizations.
And jobs, and jobs too.
And jobs too.
Yes.
Kristen, if you want to go on to the next slide? And I know Matty's already kind of touched on this, you know, challenges for neurodiverse people when like that, they can't participate in the community than others.
I'm trying to get it to go, I promise.
You're fine. As Matty says, you know, when the community labels, labels them without taking the time to find out what they're capable of. And the big one that Matty has really been raising is actually having social outlets is crucial. Especially at his age, he's a young, active man in his twenties and, you know, having places in Westford to meet other peers and to hang out and to make friendships. It's, it's very difficult and it, it's something that I, I think as community leaders and, and the planning board and stuff, we would really encourage you to kind of try and increase those opportunities within time. You know, bowling alleys, movie theaters, I mean, obviously the list could go on.
Right, okay.
Maybe some late-night coffee shops where I don't know where, where you, the twenty-year-olds hang out these days. It's been a long time.
I am sure.
But to just keep that in mind, to create spaces for all our, all our community members.
Yes.
So what can you do? Be aware, learn more, have the conversations, embrace differences and create opportunities. Remember, no two brains think alike or work alike. Again, that's the website if you want to have any information. There's a ton of resources there that actually specifically looks at organizations. Hiring is another area, and as, as well as schools. And just so you know, the schools last year kind of trialed this Neurodiversity Week within the schools. It was such a great success and the staff really loved it to the point that it was actually included in all their school improvement plans for this year as part of something that they wanted to take forward. And it's, it's being celebrated by the various teachers in classroom through, through read-alouds, through conversations. You might see it at WA when we're all there for ten meeting on the twenty-third. They put up posters last year around the building celebrating neurodiversity and they haven't taken them down, they're still there. So this is something that's been embraced by the schools already. And then what are we doing for neurodiversity in Westford this year for the community? So hot off the press this month, you're looking at two cover, cover boy and cover girl here
Yeah.
with the Westford neighbors. This was an amazing article that we managed to pull various parents of or people who are neurodiverse and this amazing article was put together that really captured it. So I encourage anyone to have a read of it if they haven't. The Town DEI hosted by Anjali and Jo very kindly invited me in on Friday and we spoke about the neurodiversity in general and the week. And the one thing we really want to plug tonight is our first and hopefully annual Neurodiversity Community Lego Building Event. It's happening on March twenty-second from three PM to seven PM in the First Parish Church in the Hall. It is a Suzanne Eaton, who's, who's on the cover, is a master builder, Lego builder, and they come together and do community events where we're going to build a. And they come together and do community events, um, where we're going to build a three D sculpture of the infinity, um, eh, symbol in rainbow and color. And so everybody can come in of all ages and Suzanne will guide you through. She'll give you the Lego pieces and tell you where to put them. We'll have some refreshments, C-Pac will also be there, um, you know, to just kind of play host and welcome the members of the community and also just to give a shout out, it is being sponsored by Representative, um, Jim R. Sierra. We needed more Lego bricks, so he has provided them, so we appreciate that. Um, and just to say thank you very much for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you.
Um, we would love to come back anytime and answer any questions and hopefully we will see you there next Friday, Friday week.
Yeah. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really, thank you for coming.
And as you can tell, we, the commission disability was much more quiet until Matty joined. Now we have a lot more enthusiasm, so, um, if, if you have a, you know, an interest in, in working with any disability that, that would be in town and making the town more accessible to those people, you know, check out the town calendar, what do we lead next? I forget, um.
The first, eh, Wednesday of every month.
First one, Wednesday of every month, so, um, you know, but feel free to come by and, or, or zoom in and, and, and join us.
Yep, we're hybrid.
We're hybrid, um, and I had one more point that I've now since forgotten, so I guess I will.
Well, we've gotten very busy, we're helping with town meeting, we're, we did, we surveyed the polling stations.
Oh, thank you, it was also the M B T communities, that, you know, they, they approached us and, and how, how could make this, if we were to proceed with the M B T communities, how could we make that more welcoming to the disabled? So, you know, the, the town's been very, when, when we approach people, it's been great, so it's been, it's been helpful.
No, it's just been awesome.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, many guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Um, next up we have, we have several, um, tree hearings. So what I would like to do is, um, take them, so I think the issues around each may be a little bit different. So we're not gonna do all four at once, we're gonna do them one by one. Um, so the first one up is the, um, removal of seven, seventy-one public shade trees on the west side of Plain Road between Letting Road and Grassy Pond, uh, conservation area. Uh, Kyle, our tree warden is here tonight, um, and, uh, I guess we'll, I mean, if we want to make a presentation or just take questions, however you wanna handle it.
I'll be brief, I'll do a little introduction. Uh, thank you Select Board for having me tonight. Uh, that's sure a tough act to follow Matty, but I'll do my best. Um, so yeah, so the first, um, hearing we'll talk about, um, as, as you said, is on Plain Road. Uh, so on March first, uh, we held four public shade tree hearings, uh, for three public, uh, improvement projects and one, uh, private development project. The first of which was, um, was Plain Road in favor of a proposed sidewalk project, uh, extension project. Um, so the hearing was held in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-seven, uh, Section Three. Prior to the hearing and at the hearing, we received, uh, quite a bit of both verbal and written testimony, uh, much of which was opposing the removal of the trees. Uh, in accordance with Section Four of Chapter eighty-seven, any written opposition, uh, from anyone, um, at a public shade tree hearing necessitates the, um, Select Board or the governing body making the decision whether to allow the tree warden to proceed with a permit to cut or trim any public shade trees. Uh, so that's where we are today. Uh, I'll certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have. Um, I think the packets included all of the written testimony we had for the project and, um, a number of exhibits for, for the, uh, Plain Road sidewalk.
Just to, so for those who haven't, actually haven't checked all the, the drawings, um, the seventy-one, seventy-one tree sounds like a lot because it, it is, but, um, in general, how big around, well, are these trees very small in general?
Yep, so that's a great question. Uh, so, um, I did kind of categorize them in, in, um, in groups of sizes. So as you say, a lot of them are smaller trees, so of the seventy-one, forty-eight of the trees are between one and a half inches and six inches. And one and a half sounds really specific, but that's the definition of a public shade tree. According to Chapter eighty-seven is any tree inch and a half or bigger. So that's why we counted all of them of that size. So forty-eight were in that range, another fourteen were between six and a half and twelve inches in diameter. Six were between twelve and a half and eighteen inches. Two were eighteen and a half to twenty-four inches and one was, um, thirty-two and a half to thirty-eight inches. Um, it was actually a thirty-six inch tree, so that's the breakdown.
Any questions from the board?
Um, I just have one, Kyle, are you sure that all of those trees need to come down? Or is this something that when you get out there and you actually start doing the engineering, that you may find out that, oh gee, this one, we can leave this one? Or is it pretty clear that they all have to come down?
Sure, I, I think it's pretty clear. Uh, so one of the questions that has come up a number of times through these processes is why do we hold the tree hearings after, you know, at the end? Shouldn't this be part of the process earlier? And the reason we typically don't do the tree hearing process earlier is cause you really don't know which trees need to be cut until it's fully designed. So our engineering team, Paul Starrett, town engineer, who's here to answer any questions you might have, and Jeremy Downs, our assistant town engineer, they actually went out and kind of staked out the location of the sidewalk to really get a good determination of which trees needed to be either trimmed or removed. So it, it, the list should be very accurate.
And then is there, are there plans to perhaps, um, replant or reseed some of them? And obviously we aren't gonna be able to replace a thirty-six inch tree overnight, um.
Right.
But, um, are there plans, um, to at least attempt to replant, um, trees along the way?
Yeah, and not necessarily right in this area, uh, because it is kind of a forested area, it'd be difficult to find a spot. Uh, one of the initiatives, uh, we're, we're going to do this year and it's, it's kind of taking shape, um, in real time. Um, I'm working with, uh, Sue, the sustainability coordinator. Uh, but anyways, the, the Tree Warden Association has an annual, uh, seedling, tree seedling program.
Who knows?
Right, right. Um, and so we're gonna be working with the, uh, Westford Kindergartens to promote a tree seedling giveaway. Um, leading up to that, we'll also, it, it'll be open to any Westford resident as well. And we're planning on ordering four hundred tree seedlings, uh, to, to give away and that'll be paid for out of the tree warden budget. So not direct replanting plan for these projects, uh, but we're hoping to overwhelm the, um, the quality of the trees that are being removed for the projects with quantity. And, and by working through the schools, what we hope is the kids will really care for these trees and we think there'll be a lot more chance of success, cause they'll, you know, it'll be their trees and.
Like a great project.
Yeah, so it'll be a lot of fun, we're looking forward to that and that'll be kind of in tune with Earth Day and Arbor Day. Uh, so we're looking forward to that program.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah, just, just a quick comment, so as part of, you know, being on pedestrian safety for many years, I've got to work with engineering and D P W. on a number of sidewalk projects. And we, well, as a committee, walk with engineering and D P W. representatives to see where the sidewalk may be laid out and, and I know that you folks try your hardest to preserve as many trees as possible, so you take this very seriously. And I think, you know, knowing like one of the sidewalk projects near my house, one on Acton Road where the sidewalk had deviated around some very large trees and you, you know, you had to do some engineering to make that all work and, um, I appreciate those efforts and I hope that the town of Westford recognizes that we're trying to find that right balance between providing safety for our residents who wanna walk or bike or, you know, get along in the str- in, in our roadways without using a car, but preserving this, you know, the, the trees that we all love, so thank you for doing all that hard work.
Yeah, well, just to look at the plan, it shows you take, took a lot of time to work around some trees and stuff because you meander off the road a little bit and do that and, and it does show that you protected a lot, a lot of trees doing that. So I think you made a great effort, I just never to do it.
Yeah, and that was intentional, um, of course I wasn't here yet, but, um, our engineering staff and the Pet Safety Committee and my understanding is some Select Board members participated in a sidewalk to really help define where that, uh, sidewalk was going to be located on Plain Road.
Appreciate it.
Well, in fact, that windy path, it gives it, it's sort of sidewalk, it's just a straight, sanitary, you know, it, it actually has some character. You, it, it meanders like, like, you know, we used to do before, we had sidewalks and we used, went to the woods, so it's.
Pay attention.
Yeah. Tom, have you got anything to add or, or are you happy?
Uh, no, just to appreciate all the hard work that, uh, that our staff is doing to minimize the impacted trees, but, uh, it sounds like, it sounds like we've, we've thoughtfully executed, so appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't see any hands online unless I'm missing anything.
I don't see any.
So is anybody in the audience wanted to say something? Okay, so that is a motion to.
Action.
Okay.
I'll say something.
Okay.
Um, it's kind of just a more general comment, I.
You, you need to tell us who you are.
Yeah, sorry, my name's Doug Woodcroft, I lived over in the, or I live over in the Navnast area. Um, it's just kind of a general comment on the tree hearing, I, I completely agree, the engineering staff has done a lot of effort and during the tree hearing, they were very attentive, very, uh, conscious of the public effort, which I under, public interest, excuse me. Um, which I understand was higher than usual, although this was a relatively new tree hearing. Um, the thing that just kind of stood out to me as strange though, is that there seemed to be a bit of a disconnect between the reason these sidewalks are going in and sort of the public interest. Obviously it's part of the Public Safety Commission or Committee, I don't know the exact terminology. Um, but it's lacking a larger plan. And one of the things that the engineering department mentioned is that occasionally when these things are brought into a broader scope, some better decisions that may be able to resolve some of the issues that the public is seeing, um, do come into perspective. And I believe that larger sidewalk plan for the town has been voted down a few times. Um, there might be other reasons for that, I don't know the exact details, I'm relatively new here, only a couple of years. Um, but it was surprising to me that that is not something that's happening. There are three or four, um, sidewalk projects involved with this that don't really have any connection to one another and they don't seem to, um, form a more cohesive unit. Um, so that, that stood out to me as a little bit surprising. Um, but the other thing that I think is a little bit not realized here, because obviously it has no, um, relevance to the public, is that there are other trees that are going to be lost with this as well that are private. So I don't think the full cost is exactly visible right now. Um, and in particular with these mature trees, while sure, there will be replanting, um, you can't really replace a mature tree, they are really critical to, you know, ecological environments and critical to the town's developing sustainability goals. So there's a lot of things that are sort of being lost with this that the cost is more than just, you know, a pretty tree on the road. Um, I also think that, you know, in terms of this larger sidewalk plan and I, this obviously a discussion for later, but amid the, you know, sort of fiscal crisis that is going on as well, um, it doesn't seem like we need to rush into this decision necessarily. You know, you could certainly put this off, maybe revisit it as part of a larger plan that could be pushed down the road a little bit. Um, just to make sure that, you know, we are definitely confident that these are, you know, the decisions we wanna make, the trees we wanna remove, things like that. Um, and, you know, anecdotally, I will just add as well, um, living near Oak Hill Road, I have seen the consequences of one of these kinds of projects, uh, where I think something like forty trees were taken down to put in a sidewalk that hopefully lasts a while and it was just really kind of devastating to the charm of that road from when we moved in, I thought it was a huge loss personally. Um, so, you know, I, I completely agree, the engineering staff has done a ton of work to, you know, go through this, be very conscious of these things. But, um, my overall impression from this tree hearing was just that there isn't necessarily the right justification to take down, in particular, these really mature trees that I think we're just talking about Plain Road right now, but there are some other really big ones down the line that, um, will impact the whole community and really kind of just the general ecological balance and culture and shape of Westford. Um, so that's just my opinion on the matter, certainly take it into consideration, but, uh, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, I mean, and okay, Chris, if you wanna.
Yeah, just for the purpose of the audience and for you, sir, uh, just to, cause you raised some questions. Um, so there isn't a, you know, a grand plan about where we lay sidewalks other than we do have a concept plan for a Westford walkway corridor, which would try to get, uh, a pathway, if you will, and it's not just sidewalks, it would allow you to trans- for, transverse Westford from south to north or north to south. But what the Pedestrian Safety Committee does do is it prioritizes sidewalk projects, looking at building connectivity to schools first, that's the highest priority, and then to town resources like parks, town buildings, uh, open space. Plain Road, which I'm just gonna speak, I won't speak about the other projects, has been a project that's been underway since twenty fifteen. So we're not rushing into this by any stretch of the imagination. It's been a very deliberative and staged process in which we extended the sidewalk to Navnast, right, the school. And then we saw opportunity in a very densely populated area of the community to continue that sidewalk to other recreational resources, so Grassy Pond and East Boston Camps. So as a result of the completion of this project, we will now have the longest contiguous sidewalk corridor that the town has, which was deliberate, right? So now we can actually use the sidewalk to go from East Boston Camps all the way up to the Rita Miller School. Someday, we'd like to see that continue up to the center of town and then you'll hear about Boston Road and then Carlisle Road. So that pathway is getting there, it's just gonna take a lot of time. So there is a greater plan, there is process, there is a lot of thought that goes into this. So I just wanna let you know and others who are listening tonight that that is something that is very deliberately planned out. But thank you very much for your comments, appreciate it.
Okay, so I guess is there a motion to, uh, sorry, oh, sorry, Chris, I'm sorry, you were faking to the green there with your, with your.
Oh, well, I'm in. Um, I applaud this gentleman. Um, I know that it's a desire to have walkways, you know, walkable Westford and that sort of thing. But a couple of years ago, National Grid wanted a whole pile of trees cut down to make it, um, easier to not be losing power. And a lot of trees were removed from Boston Road and all the way, you know, and driving through Westford, um, there's a whole bunch of trees gonna be cut down now to put in the different sidewalks. And, um, this gentleman was talking about a plan, uh, perhaps a little more strategic. Um, it's hard to juggle those needs, both of them, uh, wanting safety for pedestrians, but also cutting down the trees changes the character of Westford. When we first moved here a number of years ago, the one thing we loved about driving through Westford and the idea of moving to Westford was the tree canopy. And it was on all the major roads going through Westford. We would drive through and in the summer, the temperature would decrease about ten degrees and we could feel it. And it sounded great, it sounded beautiful, we had lots of trees everywhere. And over the years, for this or that or the next reason, a lot of trees are being cut down along those major roads. And driving them now, if you drive from our house down to the senior center, uh, up Boston Road, it is totally different, it looks like a highway anywhere else, it's just not Westford character anymore. So I think as part of the future plans, when people discuss putting in sidewalks and so forth, I know there's a plan to put, um, seedlings, bring more seedlings into town and maybe the Girl Scouts and the Scouts will plant them in other areas around town. That's good for having trees in town, but it doesn't do anything for the character of the town. It doesn't do anything to restore those beautiful canopies. There aren't many towns that have those at all and they are just marvelous. They're marvelous to drive through, to walk through and, um, they're wonderful for residents. And it would be wonderful to have as part of the plan, when trees have to come down like that to support something, what can be put in its place? And have seedlings planted in its place or around there or put in other shrubbery there. Um, I don't know if this could be part of CPA funds for the future, but I would value that, uh, as something, I would think it would be applicable for that and I think that Westford as a town ought to consider doing that. Other than just focusing on, let's put in the walkways and we gotta get rid of the trees. Or let's conserve, you know, let's not have power outages, let's get rid of the trees. It's a big decision, thank you.
Yeah, one of the challenges, and I, I, I agree with you, that, that canopy is, um.
We're losing it.
Right, I mean, one of the challenges with sidewalks is if, if you keep them towards the right of way, they're in the right of way, they're in the public space. In a, in a perfect world, you, you put them farther inland and have a, a median which you could put trees on. But that point, you're looking at taking people's land because his house is already there. So there is, there is that tension between how far back we push them to get more foliage on the roadside. It's, it's actually safer, the farther you get from the traffic, the better off you are. Except we run into the issue of, of landowners and their own gardens and stone walls and so forth.
Well, after the construction is done, sidewalk, there could be a plan to plant trees along the sidewalk that had been taken out for the purposes of construction. But they could be put back so that it will eventually regrow a canopy.
Well, yeah, so, uh, it's a good point, but I want you to be aware, right, that, that there are other trees there and so they will. And so they will grow into the space that, that were previously taken up by the trees that may have been removed. And so I think what I would caution is give, give some of these projects, which are relatively new, some time for the trees to mature and see if that character comes back. Because I, I do think if you look at some of our older sidewalks that, you know, have been there for many, many years, you'll see trees covering them and covering the road. So it's not the end-all of, you know, this tree coverage. I just think you'll need a little chance for the trees to do their thing and to grow back. So it will happen.
Okay, so I know we're a little further field from the actual topic. So i- is there a motion to approve the request to remove the public shade trees? Does anyone want public shade trees on Plain Road between Nutting and Grassy Pond?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Next is request to remove civic public shade trees on Carlisle Road between Littleton Road and Applewood Drive.
Thank you. Similar to the Plain Road project, this is in support of a proposed sidewalk project. In this case, the, the need is to remove seven public shade trees, three of which are between six and a half and twelve inches in diameter. And in that case, it's one removal and two trees to be trimmed. And then four more removals, two that are between eighteen and a half and twenty-four inches, one that's thirty-two and a half to thirty-eight inches, and one that's fifty inches.
Any questions on that one from the board? If we've got, yeah, please come forward and tell us your name and address and.
I'm Craig Blocker. My address is two Applewood Drive, which is a corner lot and borders Carlisle Road. The two largest trees here, the fifty inch and the thirty-six inch, are bordering my property, actually partially on my property. You've already heard the value of these trees. You cannot replace a fifty inch tree in any conceivable lifetime. These, these trees, along with the rest of the tree belt along that area on Carlisle Road, is, is going to be impacted by the sidewalk project. These are, are important. That Carlisle Road looks onto our side and backyard. We're going to lose privacy. We're going to lose noise reduction that provided by the foliage there. The town's going to lose these wonderful trees. Totally against this. I don't understand. I understand the importance of sidewalks. The original plan had the sidewalk on the other side of the road. If you did that in that area, you would lose none of these trees. I don't understand why the decision, well, actually I do. It's got to do with things beside trees, so I don't think the trees were all that important, which I think is a real problem. It's a real shame. I don't know what else to say. It's just a, a real shame to lose these wonderful, large oak shade trees. Fifty inch tree. Can't replace that.
Thank you. So I guess, Paul, is there any way that we engineer around or?
So Paul Starrett, town engineer, and I, I think Craig, for his comments, he's been a, a partner, and as we have discovered, we have many new project partners that will, we will take advantage of, that have, you know, been advocating for saving these trees. I'm, I'm certainly, I certainly appreciate all the environmental services that the trees provide, the shade that they, they give for the, the roads and the pavement, which get hot, as was pointed out earlier. But I'm, I'm just faced with the, the engineering challenge of getting an accessible sidewalk for all of our, our, our mobile challenged residents to get up and down the sidewalk, and the only way to do that is, is to either go inside the, of the trees, you know, which would take a lot of work and a, and a lot of, of the blockers' property, or come out into the road. And I'm just, I don't know. We, we have certainly, Jeremy and I and our design team have been out there many, many times, just parked, looking and trying to figure out what we could do, and I, I have no options to present to you.
I, I have a question. This is probably off the wall, but bear with me. As I recall, under ADA guidelines and state guidelines, our sidewalks have to be six feet wide?
Correct.
I don't know where this tree, I mean.
Well, five feet.
Technically, four feet.
It's four feet with every two, two hundred feet.
We can go down to three feet for an obstruction.
Right, but it, it ends up being like five or six feet, right?
Typically, five feet is our sidewalk.
So my question is, and, and, and I don't know if this would work given the location of the tree or whatever. Is it possible in that one area to make the sidewalk smaller so that you could preserve the tree?
We, we looked at that, Andrea, and, and I mean, that would have been, I, I could have walked in here tonight, the hero, and, you know, solved the problem. You know, IR squared and giving you the solution, but that's just, it doesn't work. I, I can't do that there that I'm. So no, I, I'm sorry, but I, that's just not going to, that wouldn't work there in this location.
Chris, I'm sorry. Did you say that you and the resident did discuss putting the sidewalk behind the trees, even though it would be on their property?
No, we never, we never got to that because we had come in to the select board several times, and we had gotten direction on where to, to, to put the sidewalks, and I, I, and for the same reason that the, the, this family doesn't want the sidewalk alongside of their property now, certainly would only compound the problem by getting closer to their swimming, their swimming pool is right there. You know, so it, no, I, I'm going to speak for you, Craig, and say that that would not, that would not work.
Okay, I have another question.
Yeah.
Would it work if instead of doing pavement, you just did, you know, like, what?
Crushed stone or something.
Crushed stone or sand pack or something like that?
Yeah, so we, we.
You can tell I'm trying to figure.
I know. Well, and, and I, I appreciate that. We have done the same thing. Unfortunately, we, we ran into this very same issue. In fact, you brought it up on Main Street many years ago, and we did a formal appeal to the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board, and they said that we couldn't do that, so.
Even for a small, I mean, on Main Street, I remember we were trying to do the whole thing, and they wouldn't let us do it, but I'm just wondering if we had this small little portion of the whole thing.
Right.
And then, of course, it's who would know.
And, and, you know, right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that opportunity is not there, so.
What's the reason it couldn't be on the other side of the street?
You asking me or?
I didn't, no, it came from behind you.
Sure, yeah, right.
I didn't ask that.
Do you want to entertain that question?
So we, we did, we did come in with multiple options over the years. This project, we've been looking at since before 2019. And, and one of those options was on the other side of the road. But we're going to capture the, the kinder care property, which has a sidewalk. If ever there was a sidewalk to nowhere, it's in front of kinder care on Carlisle Road. It starts and stops in front of their property. So connecting that kinder care to the sidewalk network and the surrounding neighborhoods, I believe, was the better part of wisdom that the select board chose and decided upon.
We went, we must discuss, discuss having it on both sides, and that, that was a cost prohibitive, so we had to go from one or the other, and it made more sense to be, again, the idea is you want to protect the most vulnerable citizens, which was kinder care.
There's a hand up on Mike.
Okay. I don't see it, so if you want to make, make them active.
Yep, Emily, Emily Teller.
Emily.
Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for unmuting me. You know, I'm a tree hugger here, and I'm just always concerned because the trees in Westford, when we moved here forty-one years ago, were a significant asset. And it just does seem that we're cutting them down and not replacing them. I appreciate Kyle's sending his budget to pay for the seedlings. I'm a little worried about kindergartners taking them home and having their parents commit to the trees. I think that's a good idea, I guess, but seedlings are not even baby trees. They're seedlings. And I'm frustrated because I keep coming before you pleading for trees. Is there any way that the planning board can start requesting more trees be planted in their projects? That's kind of another thing. I, I saw a sign at the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail this week that says, "Westford is a tree city." And it kind of broke my heart because I know that ACC is a tree city. They're putting trees up all over the place with the green bags and, you know, committing to viability there. But I don't understand how we can qualify for a tree city. I'd sort of like to have, have Kyle answer that. I'm worried about the material of the sidewalks. If it's just going to be asphalt, then obviously the other trees, as they grow, are going to cause cracks in the asphalt. And I don't know how that will be handled, whether they'll have to, you know, redo the sidewalks, cut the roots of the trees for what? I'm a little concerned about that. I know I'm giving you a lot at this point, but I guess we just need to be more sensitive to trees, and it needs to start at the top. An oak tree can host two hundred species, one oak tree, of insects and birds. And these trees can't speak for themselves, the ones that we're cutting down, especially the ones along Carlisle Road. I drive that very often because I live at the other end of it. What can we do? What can the select board leadership do to make us truly reflect being a tree city?
I just observed that, that up, up in Troy, there are two beautiful black walnut trees that I planted when they were seedlings. Yeah, of course, that was fifty odd years ago, but, but, and not, not every kid will have the patience, but they, they will grow and they will be pretty impressive once they get bigger. So it's just, it's, it's patience. But I don't have, I don't have an easy answer to your question, Emily.
Well, I'll take a stab at it, if you don't mind. And I, I brought this up earlier. I mean, I think we try to be very good stewards of the tree scape that we have today, and that when we try to build these projects, we do so with the utmost care to try to preserve as many trees as possible. And if you look at the presentations that our tree warden has provided us, you will see that, yes, there are some magnificent trees that sadly have to come down for this project. But there is a lot of other trees that will still remain there, and they will grow over time. I think, you know, we as a community are trying to balance a lot of different priorities, trees coverage being one of them, but also the safety of our residents. We are no longer a town of five thousand, eight thousand, however many thousand residents it was when you all first may have moved in. I know I've been here for fifteen years, and it's definitely changed in my time, so I can only imagine if I had moved in thirty, forty years ago, how different the community is. But the reality is, we have far more cars on the road today. We have far more residents, and we do have, sorry?
Bicycles.
And bicycles, and we have conflict, and we have people who want to be able to walk on our roads, want to be able to bike on the roads, want to have that safety aspect. So we aren't just saying, okay, we're going to put the sidewalk in with complete disregard to all the trees that are along our roadways. We're not doing that. We're trying to do it in a very careful, thoughtful way. And so Emily, I think that's the leadership that we're showing here, that we are taking this seriously, and we're having these hearings, and we're trying to listen to residents and trying to find the best way possible. And so residents can really help us by, you know, maybe working with engineering and saying, hey, there is a large tree that's on my road. Maybe if I give up some of my anisement on my property, we can put the sidewalk behind that tree instead of potentially taking that tree down. So that's something a resident could potentially do to help us in that regard. But I do think we're putting in the leadership that you're asking for, Emily, and there are ways that we're trying to be creative about restoring these trees over time.
Okay. Tom, you want to opine?
Deep thought for the day. No, I just want to build on Kyle's plan. I was wondering if, if we might formalize our policy of, of replacement in the unfortunate circumstance where we do need to take down a tree. I, I understand you can't replace a fifty, you know, fifty inch tree with, with seedlings in any organized way, but I'm wondering if there's a way we could say we are committed to tree cover, and in the unfortunate circumstance, when the balancing act of public safety or other needs requires us to take a tree, we have a way that we are, you know, replacing that in some other way or some other place. So not to put you on the spot, but maybe something to think about, whether we want to formalize our policy of replacement in some, in some way.
Well, to me, to me, right now, there's, there's two separate problems, right? One is, we're talking about two big trees that have their own value to the ecosystem, and we could, you know, potentially grow the tree someplace else. Then there's the impact to, to quality of life that we can't fix with those trees. So that's, that's what's, I'm struggling with. I don't think there's a good answer to that, but if you want, if you want to speak again, you can.
Actually, before we, just to answer Tom's question, I believe Jeffrey Morris said is working on some sort of tree program.
There's certainly something with the MVP program that we applied for and how we have a tree plan. It's just not been able to take shape based upon the other work that's been happening, but, and I'm sure with the strategic plan coming out and other, the open space and recreation plan, that things are going to be coming together. We just don't have anything at this moment to point our fingers to.
Tom, to your point, I, I think there is something in the works that staff is looking at, putting in something that's going to have a little bit more strategic nature to it. So I think that will come. It just isn't quite there yet.
Can I make another comment?
He's a very patient sitting, so I'm going to return to our resident and then come back to you, Emily.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just the, the comment that, that trees are being put in at most importance. When, in this case, the side of the street that the sidewalk was chosen to be on, it chose to be on the side where the trees had to come down because there's a short section of sidewalk already on that side. If you put it on the other side, you don't have to take any trees. I just don't understand why that little section of sidewalk is so important to this project compared to the size of these trees you're going to be taking out.
Okay, thank you. And Emily?
Thank you. Just a sec. I just had a thing that I was going to be muted in six seconds, so I just wanted to send this in. Chris, I appreciate what you're saying. It just seems to me a passive way to say, we're sorry that these trees are coming down. We're doing our best, and there are other trees that are going to come up that are already there. I, I just, I really praise Tom for his perspective and suggestion that we really formalize a policy of tree replacement or replanting. Because I, I'm just thinking, you know, down by the Jack Wash Field, there's going to be some construction down there for the entrance, but there's a lot of room there that big trees could go in. Does that mean then that the parks and rec are going to have to deal with the leaves? I don't know, but, you know, there are places, and when we take down a big tree, I think that other trees should be planted as close to that area as possible and, and do a positive, active, committed role. And I would really like for Kyle to comment on how we are a tree city, if he doesn't mind.
Sure, I'd be happy to, Emily. So I don't know a lot about the program. This was covered at the tree warden certification class that I went to this fall. And to, to be declared a tree city, you have to meet certain requirements, and it's the, the basic requirement, and please don't quote me on this, I didn't expect this question. It's something along lines of you have to commit, I think it's between two and five dollars in your tree program per resident in the town. So if it was two dollars for Westford, I think that would be in the neighborhood of fifty-six thousand dollars. Currently, currently, our tree warden budget is about forty thousand dollars. So we're actually not meeting that commitment at this time.
So who put this, who put that sign up? I guess, who put that sign up on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, and where did they get that information?
It's usually a town.
It's not ACC. It's in the Westford part.
It's usually.
Well, I assumed it was in the Westford part, Emily, but again, who put it up and who authorized somebody to put it up?
It's usually a town designation that you have to have certain regulations and bylaws and have to commit certain money, so we can certainly look into that.
But it sounds like we're not there yet, so it's been.
Or we may have been there, and we may not be there anymore, so we need to look into that.
It's a, it's a very new sign. It's been probably up in the last four or five months.
Then I want to know who gave the authorization to. Then I want to know who gave the authorization to put it up.
And what are we, what are we spending that tree budget on, Kyle, for forty thousand dollars?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're getting a further field, so I guess.
Okay.
So I have one last question for the resident. I understand I can't replace a fifty foot tree. I also hear you about your pool being there and privacy, so, and I don't know if this will solve the problem, help the problem, but whatever. Is there anything we can do to help? Is there anything we can do to help them by planting shrubbery there? You know, something to form some sort of, you know, border barrier, privacy wall to help the resident out?
We had those conversations, but Craig can explain.
It's possible. But part of the problem is Carlisle Road is, is actually a couple of feet higher than our yard. And so the road actually looks down into our yard. We already have a privacy fence on that side of our pool, but it's only six feet tall. And to really shut things out, it would have to be much higher. Planting enough along that, you know, I've asked that question, but I get no commitment that anybody's really going to do it. It's always said it might be possible. It depends on, there might be money, there might not be money. I, I don't know. It's just that it's, it's going to be an impact to our.
I'm just, I know it, I'm just trying to think of ways to perhaps minimize the impact to you, sir.
That's great. I'm totally in favor of that.
So I guess I should only answer this one, Paul, but I don't. So when is the plan to actually construct this sidewalk? How much time do we have to work with?
So we, we've gotten a commitment from Newport Materials to come out in, on April 15th or a little bit before to do this project in Plain Road as well. So that's what we're, that's his commitment to us in writing, that he's going to be out there doing this work. He's already purchasing, purchasing the materials and getting his, his schedule is set for that.
And if we didn't do it on the 15th, does it go away forever or?
You mean, if we didn't do this, if we didn't do the sidewalk project?
This particular, this particular sidewalk project, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will, I don't know how to answer that.
What would be the benefit of delay?
Well, if, if there may be a way to screen the pool.
The pool's already screened.
No, this, this is screened currently by, with the function of about a four-foot fence because of the.
It's much like, well.
Because if you're two foot higher and you got a six-foot fence, it's a four-foot fence, right?
Right.
So if there were, you know, higher plantings or something, I'm just saying, is there?
So just, just, just.
Can we?
We could, but remember, this project has been in the works now for, I think, pre-COVID, right? So it has gone on for a very long time. Every time we delay it, we risk losing the budget that we have allocated to it because of cost increases. We've already had to come back a couple of times because of the length of this project for extra money. You know, I, I don't think that by delaying it, and we've put, we've put a ton of work in to secure the services of Newport Materials to get them to commit to doing this project this year. It would be potentially very difficult for us to do that at another time. This has been a project that, as I said, has been in planning for a very long time. We have the money, we have the contractor ready to do the build. I understand there's an impact to this resident. You know, from a privacy perspective, I question if these two trees are taken down, if it's that much of an impact, right? I'd be very cautious about offering fencing and shrubbery because if we do that here, how do we control that for the next project and the next project? So are we going to have every resident coming that we do a sidewalk project saying, hey, will you put up a fence? Will you put up shrubbery? So I, I understand there's a privacy impact, but this is a societal good. It's for the benefit of lots of neighbors that I think, you know, both who reside in these areas today, but in, for the future. And it's part of a larger network that we hope to see continue down this road. So, you know, if we want to be part of a society, sometimes, you know, things are maybe a potential negative impact. I will say probably for this resident, when they go to sell this house, if this sidewalk is on their property, it'll probably raise the value of their home. So, you know, you could take that away as a consolation. You could shake your head, but the data is, I would argue against you, sir. So that's just the way it is. But so I would argue, we do not want to delay this project. We've put a lot of effort into this over many, many years.
Okay, so, does one have any particular will here to make a motion, either yes or no?
I mean, I'll make the motion that we support this request.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, I guess we'll call for the vote then. Trey, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. I don't see, yeah.
But I'd like to also ask Carl and Paul, hello. I realize that Newport is going to start in about six weeks. But if there is anything you can do to mitigate the impact upon Mr. Blocker's property, to please look at that and to see what, if anything, you can do, including if there's a small part that we just don't conform with the state, then we don't.
Well, I do think, I mean, as recall, you could have it be narrower in certain spots, as long as it turn around someplace else, so.
So to answer your question, absolutely, Andrea. We will, we have and are going to, every step of the way.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, if, as long as there's a place that you can turn around that it's wide enough, you can, you can make it smaller, so.
And I do have some thoughts floating around in my head.
We need to make it a trail there.
Because if I say something, it'll be a commitment, but we, we will definitely work towards.
Like I said, you need to make it a trail. I know we talked about at one point when we were doing Main Street, having a trail down there, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you all.
One more, right?
Two more.
Two more, I'm sorry. So request for two public shade trees on Boston Road.
Yep, thank you. The, the next tree airing.
Stop for a second. So maybe could I ask if, maybe you came back to the board and say, two weeks, if that's enough time to think about a, a solution? As well, we have, I don't want to say we're going to forget about it because that's not fair to Mr. Blocker. So I guess, just a first, all around first communication, could you come back and say, at next meeting in two weeks, say, is there a, a path forward that is, you know, better than what we have right tonight?
Certainly, if that's the board's desire, yeah.
It may be more beneficial if you just charge us with making Mr. Blocker happy. If he's happy, then we won't have to come back here. But if we, if we can come up with a solution that he's satisfied with, we still need his cooperation for the project.
But also that making him happy may involve some, some money. And so we have to make sure we understand that. So don't just, no, don't just make him happy at any cost, but yes, certainly it'll work out something that will work.
Yep.
Okay, so sorry, I don't, I went back one, but now back to, to this. I just want to make sure we have a loop that gets closed.
Yeah, good suggestion. So the next tree airing was for Boston Road. And this, this, this is in support of the state-funded improvements to the section of Boston Road from Main Street down to Route 110. And it, it will include increasing the amount of Boston Road that's owned and maintained by the town. But as, as I mentioned, it, it is 100% paid for by the state. It's a, I think roughly $12 million project.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you.
Oh, what's another million?
In this case, there were two public shade trees that were proposed to be removed. One down towards Crown Road and one further up on, on Boston Road. The one down towards Crown Road, there were no specific comments about at the tree airing. The one closer up to Mr. Jeffrey's house, there, the large sugar maple, there was significant comment at the tree airing. And I think Paul has a suggestion that you might speak to.
Just, just information, if you would, Mr. Chair. So Paul Starrett, Town Engineer, this particular sugar maple tree in front of 13 Boston Road, this, this fell victim to the, the tension between speed, which we know has been an issue, and you've opined on this several times on Boston Road, and, and the tree. So we had proposed median strips or median islands that are, that have since been placed flush into the road. But in this location, where we were working around driveways and competing with other trees, this was the only place that we could put, in this stretch of Boston Road, one of those islands. We have secured our, our, our property rights, our easements on both sides of the road here. But, you know, if this tree, as I say in my memo, is, it's a beautiful tree. There are two trees out there that are just the kind of trees you take pictures of. They're just beautiful trees. And yet their root systems are, and trunks are already close to the road. So they're, they're in jeopardy even just when we get out there to start work, to put in trenches and utilities and stormwater and the water pipes that we need to put in. So we're going to be excavating very carefully around these trees. But the one that we're asking to be removed as a part of the project is the one closest to the road and would need to come out if we're going to keep the traffic island for traffic, for traffic calming.
So what happens if we don't have a traffic calming island in that part of the road?
We, we would certainly try to salvage the tree, but it's still very close to the road already. And, and, and so we're, we have provisions for hydroexcavating. And, and we'll be carefully working with the contractor to excavate around the roots, to do what we can to save the trees. But, so even if we were to remove the islands, which we can do through a change order with, if we work with Mass DOT and they approve that, I'm meeting with them on Monday. I'll, I can run that by them, just as a, you know, a straight face test to see if there's going to be problems with that. But we would try to salvage it, Andrea, and do what we can if you want to. We've secured the, the property rights, so, you know, if we could, we, it keeps our options alive.
I guess, so just, just one of that. So the very individuals, I suspect, who want to save the tree, I would guess are the same ones who work with speeds because, right, they're, they're in that neighborhood. So have they made aware of the fact that, maybe they're online and they can speak themselves, but that there, there could be a trade-off here? And which do they prefer? Has that been discussed?
I, I would never put anyone in that position, certainly not you guys. I would not want to put you in that.
Well, I think, I think, I think it's a fair question.
Those are your options. So we, we, we could ask for a change order. I mean, the project's already, it's advertising on June 1st, and it's, we've made our final submissions. But we can ask for a change order, and I, I don't think it's one that's going to be difficult to accomplish. And, and if we're, you know, but if we're not able to salvage the tree, then, you know.
Well, I mean, I'll, I think about, about speeds, at that, that high up the road, and if you're, if you're coming out of the town center, you haven't got a lot of speed up yet. And kind of up the hill, you're kind of already slowing down. So I guess if I had to take out an island, that might be the one that I would sacrifice.
That's, that's what I'm thinking. I'm also wondering about procedure, okay? Because I'm not an engineer. Do you dig around, you know, do you trench and do your digging around the tree before you put the island in? So, I mean, my, I guess my question is if, if the tree isn't somehow, somehow damaged when you're doing that work, then, and it's not salvageable, then we might know that, well, we would put the island in because we don't have the tree. But I guess I don't know the timing and how that works.
Right. And we'll, I'll work with the tree warden on that, on that, in that particular case. We're, we're going to, we're, it's going to be all hands on deck when we are working in and around that tree to do what we can. For excavating trenches, the island isn't a problem. That's going to be near the surface.
I, I'm just thinking in terms of your change order and when you have to submit it to DOT.
Right. Yeah, no, that, that's not going to be a problem for us. We, we have a very good, I, one of the benefits of having done so many of these tip projects with the state.
You're on good terms with the DOT.
I have, you know, I, I have their respect and I have their cooperation when we work with, with DOT on these projects.
And there is a no retirement clause in your contract, right?
Yeah, right, exactly.
John?
How wide is that island that you've got designed there? It looks like very skinny on.
Yeah, yeah, it's two and a half feet, I believe. I, I don't, don't quote me on that, but it's, it's small. It's, they're only there to create the visual, to give the visual message to operators that this is a pinch point. It's narrow. I'm going to, you know, I'm not, it's not as effective as if there was a raised vertical granite, but it will have some impact on.
Is the road a little bit wider because of that or not?
No, we're actually making the road narrower. We're going down to 11-foot lanes.
So could you shift the road, the width of that island away from the tree?
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no other engineering solution.
You take the island out.
Right.
Well, you take the island out, but that, that has to allow you to move the road, the edge of the road a little bit.
Right.
Otherwise, you leave the island in.
Right.
So you got to move the, the road edge a little bit, at least say a foot.
Correct.
Or two feet away.
It bulges right there.
Both sides.
On both sides.
So you could shift it two feet instead of just one. And, and, and that's pretty high up. That's about 13 Boston Road. Of course, those islands, that hadn't been proven that they would slow anybody down anyway, but that's just a good idea. So I think that would be, a change order, we're, we're eliminating a structure. We're eliminating a difference, so it would.
Might be an easy change order made.
No, they'll still get money from us.
That's, that's the nature.
Okay, so, but, okay. So has anybody?
So I think, I mean, in terms of direction.
I suppose since I've been lying, I want to comment.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure this, no?
I don't see anyone.
No.
Okay. I thought we showed a butter or two.
Just in terms of direction, I mean, at least from my perspective, I think we need to do everything that we possibly can to save this tree. I think if that means taking out the island and preserving the tree, that that's, at least I personally, is something that I'm, that's a trade-off I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with.
If it was, yeah, if it was farther down and we were talking about increased accident rates, something, I'd be different. But this is, to me, it's a no-brainer. We could save a tree and not have a huge cost.
Especially a sugar maple.
Yeah, especially that one.
Especially that one, which is so pretty.
Correct.
Okay, so, John.
I got a question about the tree on Crown Road.
Yes.
Now, you say that's necessary for a lot, okay, I'm worried about that. Okay, thank you.
Tree at Crown Road, but to recommend or to actually demand, what are the right phrases?
We'll salvage the sugar maple as best we can.
With the line change, okay. So that is the motion. So is there, is that motion being made by somebody?
Yes, I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, Chris?
So I'm still not clear on, can we just restate the motion?
We are going to remove the tree as requested at Crown. We're going to maintain the sugar maple where it is and not cut it down at 13 Boston Road. And we're going to put out a change order to take out the island to accommodate that, that tree.
If we find that the tree isn't going to be salvageable, what happens?
I will come back to you. We'll keep you posted on that, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll certainly advise, and we'll, we'll have time. We'll, we'll flex that. We'll make that happen if we can get the island in.
It would be a major problem.
So you're comfortable with this, even though we've had numerous residents right from that area who have complained about speeds on that very section of road? And we're going to take out the speed control device?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's the motion.
That's my motion.
I'm going to, I'm going to say no, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, so. John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so 4-1.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just before I go to the last one here, I personally would like to thank all the residents that have been a part of this process. There've been, there've been a lot of passion in it, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, I have to observe that there's been a lot of respect and courtesies, you know, not. It would be easy to, you know, make me a pin cushion on this. But people, people have been understanding both sides, and it's just healthy communication, it's worth pointing out.
Thank you.
Just want to, before we move on from Boston Road, I have asked Kyle and Paul to come before you in the next month or two just to give an update on where we are in the Boston Road project, not to make any changes to the project or anything like that, but to give you and the public an update since we will be going out to bid in June.
Great. Thank you.
And finally, the request to remove 30 public shade trees on 73 through 81 Nutting Road. This is not for a sidewalk, this is for private development. And just to be perfectly clear, I live on Nutting Road, but I'm across the street. These are none of my property, so I am not in any way recusing myself because it's not, has no impact upon me personally. These are none of my properties, so I am not in any way recusing myself because it's not, has no impact upon me personally, so.
Great, thank you Scott. So yeah, so as you noted, this one is not a, in support of a town improvement. This is for a private development that is conditionally approved by the planning board for two new roads off of Nutting Road in support of a, a new development. In this case, they're looking to remove 38 public shade trees in support of both the two roadways and for, to meet Ashdod site distance requirements for the roadway connection to Nutting Road. Similar to the, the other ones, I did kind of group the trees into diameter ranges. So in this case, of the 38 trees, 14 of them are between one and a half inches and six inches in diameter. Nine of them are six and a half to 12 inches. Six are 12 and a half to 18. There's one between 18 and a half and 24. Six more between 24 and a half and 30 inches. And two that are between 30 and a half and 38 inches. Matt Waterman, the design engineer from Land Tech is here. If you have any specific questions about the development and I'm here if you have any questions about process.
And one of those trees was burned twice because it's so close to the power lines that it abrades the covering and it ignites and the fire, I'm going to put the, the roots so they're cut shorter.
So that one has.
I'll be glad to see that one go.
Matt's happy to hear that.
I, I guess I have a question. In the planning, I, I see you sitting back there Jeff, so this probably is a question for you. In the planning board's review and conditional approval of this project, are any of the, do any of the conditions have to do, deal with the cutting down of trees or replacement of trees that are cut down or landscaping or anything?
Jeff Morissette, Director of Land Use Management. I'm going off of memory here from a project from, I think, 2019.
Okay. Okay.
My understanding, my recollection to the best of my ability is that there were conditions of approval to ensure that there was adequate site distance for both of those entrances. And there were some requirements, I believe, for some street trees along the proposed roadways. And I believe they were simply planning to cut or remove the trees as was minimally needed to satisfy either the basic access requirements, the site distance requirements, or if there were any utilities going in. So in terms of, I believe there were other trees in place there that they were to have everything remain that could be remained, that did not interfere with safe access.
Thanks.
Sure.
I mean, and because it's development, it's a whole bunch of trees going down inside. So that these, these was the tip of the iceberg.
Yeah.
John?
I'm surprised National Grid's not on us to take some of those trees down anyway. They're all over those lines down there on Nutting Road.
Tell you about it.
There are a lot of issues with that. A lot of those tall pines have the potential of either dropping a limb or coming down on it.
Yeah, there may be, we're waiting for this year's National Grid has a tree mitigation program. So I don't know what they intend for this year's program. But there, you know, there will be some trees in town that, they do recommend removals. Similar to last year, we came before the select board for some trees on Carlisle Road, coincidentally.
Yeah, what, what, what if the wind blows like today, we pray they all stay up. If you sneeze, you lose power, so. So, yes, there are.
I'll move to approve.
Anything online with comments?
Check. No, not at this time.
So motion approved from Andrea, is there a second? All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you.
I'm sorry, before we move off of this, just to come back to a topic that was, or a question that was raised at the very beginning about notification for these types of hearings. Would it be okay if we did, and this is to you Kristen, I think, the, like, the news flash system? So the town notices, so if we have a.
Did a news flash for that?
I didn't, I didn't see it, I looked. So maybe that's something that we could use to increase awareness for the future.
Yeah, so in, in accordance with one of the residents' former comments, we are going through this whole website redesign. We received comments from that resident, we're receiving online comments, so yes. And we'll be developing more and more processes about public hearings and these types of things. So yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, all of you.
For a long night.
I think I've learned more about the Public Shade Tree Act and shade trees in the last six weeks, Kyle, than I have known in, in my ears on the select board. There's a new warden in town.
Do you get a five star badge, Kyle?
I've been here 19 years and that Friday was my first tree hearing.
Okay, moving right along. Tom Lee, for one week that we get behind. Request to approve the order of taking for the Plainbush sidewalk project, Phase One, as prepared by Town Council and as authorized by Town Meeting. Paul?
Sure, Paul Starrett, Town Engineer. So this is the order of taking that we need to build the sidewalk that we just discussed from Nutting Road to flushing pond, parking, parking. The other pond, grassy pond.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
I'm an aye.
And I do have a document for you to sign before you leave.
And it's worth noting that we did this without any eminent domain takings. The, all the residents signed over waivers for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you again for all the hard work.
Okay, Annual Town Meeting, March 23rd. Reminder, reminder that we have coming in the 23rd, 9:00 AM. Discuss outreach and communication methods to inform residents on Annual Town Meeting and proper override. And I think Kristen, that's yours.
I can start that and if I forget anything, because I've been rambling this for the past two months, please fill in. So again, just a reminder that to residents, that the Annual Town Meeting is on Saturday, March 23rd at 9:00 AM at Westford Academy. Registration starts at 8:00 AM. We will have registration in the lobby. The first 800 people to arrive will be going into the gymnasium and given a clicker with a certain sticker color and a hand stamp of that color. The next 800 people, if we get to that amount, will be going to the PAC with a different color clicker and a different color hand stamp. We will be having offsite parking at Christopher Foley and Robinson School with school buses and COA vans for transportation circulating throughout the entire day. We are working with DPW and police on when we feel that WA's parking is going to be coming full, changing message signs and changing social media to direct people to go to Christopher Foley and Robinson School at that point in time. The moderator will be starting with consent agenda and then moving directly to Article 1 through 4, which are the budget articles. And then at 12:45 or right after lunch, we will be reviewing the zoning articles at that point in time. We will be having pizza lunch for sale in the cafeteria for those wishing to purchase a lunch. People can also bring their own lunch if they don't want to leave and perhaps lose a parking space at that point in time. We did have our motions meeting today and are going to have a logistics meeting tomorrow related to parking and circulation and all of those good things. And we'll be meeting on site on Thursday to discuss those as well. As a reminder, there's AV that will be working seamlessly in between the PAC and the gymnasium. The people in the gymnasium will be able to see and hear in real time the people in the opposite room and so on and so forth. At today's meeting, and we just wanted to remind the public that the wifi in the gymnasium and the PAC is limited, so there's generally not 800 people in those locations. So we recommend that people who want to use a device, they download their materials onto their device before coming or they print them. We will have a number of copies at the Town Meeting, but we want to be cognizant and limited to save trees and to save printing and to save costs, but also to make sure that people have the information that they need. So we're really balancing that. So if you do want to bring your materials on tablet, all of the materials have been uploaded to the Town Meeting webpage on the website. If you can download them in advance, that would be great. We did mail out the Town Meeting postcard and it should be hitting your mailboxes tomorrow or Thursday. So please keep that in mind. There's a QR code on there to bring people directly to the Town Meeting webpage that has all of these enhancements and additional materials. So I think that is what I have for Town Meeting this evening. I'm not sure if I missed anything.
Just one, one point of clarification. So if, if people were planning on leaving at noon to go grab coffee, whatever it is, do they turn in a clicker as they get in when they come back?
That is correct. So they will have a hand stamp. So you would turn in your clickers as you're leaving into a box. When you come back, you'll check back in with a teller. They'll show your hand stamp and you'll get the same color clicker and go back into the same room that you were in before.
Let's be clear, if you, we encourage you to stay there because of timing, but also there is that, you know, clicker transfer, we need to make sure we, we handle.
Absolutely. And then last week, Scott, Dr. Chu and myself were able to record an additional video related to the budget and the override. So that is circulating on WCAT and we got that up on the budget webpage this week. So want to make sure that people are viewing that information as well before they come to Town Meeting.
Paul?
Paul Osbert, Texas Road. In our quest to cultivate more informed voters and so forth, I'd like to renew my request from last week that among the materials that get out is something that helps taxpayers with their long-term personal financial planning. A lot of the material so far, and I understand from the time pressures you've all been under and so forth, this has obviously not been a top priority. But a lot of people are concerned with the 10 and 20-year impact of the override, among other things, trying to forecast better what their personal spending is going to be. And I learned this week, it's not just the seniors and the low income and the disabled people. I've been approached by young families and so forth who've taken out big mortgages coming to Westford. They're now concerned that the financial plan that they put together when they were financing their house and projecting their property taxes and all that may be in jeopardy. One fellow even suggested that they are starting to question whether they can afford to have their second child if this override goes through and so forth. So it would be really helpful to have two things. One, the, the chart that I sort of gave to Dan last week that sort of shows the impact on a yearly basis and a cumulative basis for the first five years in some detail and then 10, 20 and 25 years in summary. Realizing it's not a commitment, it's just a, a tool to help people understand what they're really voting on. And the second is an update of the excluded debt chart that typically we only show a few years of at Town Meeting and so forth. It would be helpful to show that going out to the last year that there's excluded debt in the plan with the part that's not available at the top of the chart sort of saying, this is available for future projects. We have the capability that we're planning for to be able to do capital projects in the future. We just don't know what they are yet. But you can assume that you're going to be paying, you know, a, a certain portion of your property tax in the future and we're going to manage that to keep it reasonably consistent and predictable, which my understanding is, has been the plan for the, the last 10 years or so. We just haven't trusted residents with showing them a, a little bit of the details behind the curtain. So I think those two things would be really helpful if we can get those out.
May I comment on that? So I'll take the first one. We are updating the excluded debt chart. It may not meet your entire expectations, but that will be part of the State of the Town presentation that I give and it will hopefully be uploaded in advance. I'm very hesitant to do any financial planning for any resident because that is a liability on the town and everyone's situation is very different. So unless the board directs me differently, I don't think that that's an idea that we want to get into related to this situation.
No, I mean, because, I mean, 10 years ago, I couldn't tell you we'd be here today. I couldn't tell about COVID, I couldn't, I mean, so, you know, we can trend it at two and a half percent increases for a year, but anybody can do that. But you're at the mercy of the electorate, the voters at that point, the select boards at that point, the FinCom. I, I don't know how we would do that in anything other than just a simple trend that anybody could do in the back of an envelope.
And I, I would argue that probably some of the stuff we've already done that projects out at two and a half percent is not realistic. I looked at my own personal tax bills for the last 20 years. The average is 3% over that, that whole time period. And my year-to-year 23 to 24 increase was 4.6%. So obviously, people are going to have to be a little aggressive in their planning and so forth.
We also have to assume what's the commercial residential split. I mean, there's, there's way too many assumptions to, to, to plan that beyond, you know, three years. We're working really, really hard to do three years. I assure a second, 110, 20.
Well, at least hopefully, residents should be aware that there will be tax increases over the years and so forth. And at least I would hope we could show, show an extended version of the excluded debt because a lot of that is stuff that's already been bonded and it's a firm commitment and it is fact.
Fair enough.
So, so that one would be good.
Although, yeah, I think things will come off and we don't know what, what goes on and when, so.
Right, so, so the part that doesn't go on, we don't know yet and that can just be shown as potential for future projects or something like that to be determined.
Okay, but at that point, it's a flat line that we say we want to manage to. But again, it depends upon what fails in town and what the voters want, so.
But history has shown that the town has been managing to $3 million to $4 million a year in excluded debt. And hopefully, part of the strategic planning process that I'm really glad we're embarking on will be to set some goals in those areas that we can communicate to residents so we can be more predictable and transparent.
Okay, thanks. So now moving along to Town Meeting and the Select Board review of articles. Jeff, Articles 17, 18? Oh, Diane, sorry.
Getting, getting back, Diane Wood, 122 Depot. So compliments. I've been working with, with our, our town clerk regarding the logistics for ATM and I have to compliment everybody, compliment her office on how much tighter, and, and our town moderator, how much tighter things will be this time around versus October. And a lot of, you all know, a lot of work. And I really appreciate all the effort to ensure as smooth as possible that the event goes as smooth as possible and all the details that are now being revisited. So kudos, I guess, for a change, but thank you very much, that's all.
Okay, Jeff, Articles 17 and 18, I guess 17 first and, well then we'll take a position and go on to 18.
All right, thank you very much, Jeff Morissette, your director.
And congratulations on your upcoming promotion.
Thank you very much. Bill, currently Director of Land Use Management.
We will have you sitting on here very soon.
We'll make a big splash.
We love big splashes.
Yes, Jeff loves big splashes.
So Article 17 is about amending the floodplain overlay district. So as most of you know, FEMA routinely updates their floodplain maps every so often. But in addition to updating the flood maps for their, the major watersheds, and we have two in town, they also update their requirements for their procedures and their permit requirements. So they did update their minimum requirements in 2020 and so we are now out of compliance with those minimum requirements. If we do not amend our zoning bylaw to become compliant with their newest standards, we will no longer be eligible as an NFIP community. And so we would not be eligible any longer for federal flood insurance. So that's a big deal to some people in town. We have only taken the minimum standards as required by FEMA. We removed the portions that do not apply to Westford for, say, coastal communities. This has been vetted by the State Floodplane Coordinator who has reviewed all the materials. We have, I apologize if I did not get it into your packet in time. We have a brief explainer that's on the Town Meeting website. It also shows where the existing 100-year floodplanes are in town and identifies, and those are blue, and the pink are just the parcels that are affected by those 100-year floodplanes. So this proposed amendment, it would not change where the 100-year floodplain is. It just makes our bylaw consistent with the minimum requirements from FEMA. And just for some handy dandy facts here, there are at least 55 policies already in town where people currently have federal insurance policies. There may be others, but we're not able to track those through the federal program. And it totals about $14.5 million of insurance coverage right now. So if we became ineligible, did not update this, they, no one else would be able to acquire federal flood insurance. It doesn't mean they could not secure private insurance. But if a property has special or high risk, many times private insurance is either not a possibility or it's very cost prohibitive. But you can always have an ability to secure the federal insurance if the community is part of the NFIP community system. So we think it's very important to do. Planning Board held their public hearing on this. On March 4th, they closed it and they voted to recommend 500 unanimously. And we're just happy to answer any questions you might have. The biggest changes really are saying that they changed some of the purpose section. They basically say you need a permit for work within a floodplain, which we already have as a requirement. We did a little bit of researches going back, say, 10 years. The Planning Board issued, I think perhaps, a total of six or seven permits relative to floodplain in the last 10 years. This doesn't come up very often. This doesn't come up very often. I think four of the sites were actually on Elm Road, all in the same part of land, and all the others, they were also reviewed by the Conservation Commission. I think there's just one, a Footbridge project that was in floodplain, that was not reviewed by the planning board or was not reviewed by the building commissioner that needed a permit. So we think this is all well and good for the town, and just protects our property and gives folks options and can keep insurance if they have it.
Any questions?
Move to recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Adam and I.
Thank you very much. So MBTA Communities, Article 18. We've been before you folks several times before, you're probably tired of hearing about this a little bit, but the planning board did conclude their public hearing on March 4th. Their report and recommendations are also on the town meeting section of the website. We do, they did unanimously recommend. We've actually lined up quite a few, number of boards and committees have actually taken position on this proposal, and when you see in the draft motions document, I think we're up to at least maybe seven different boards and committees right now, which is very, very happy to see. I did catch a little bit, the tail end of the conversation from open forum. I don't know if you do want me to try to address any of those now, if you want me to reach out to that speaker, but.
Actually, I think because it was part of open forum, if you can give us a clear version of a response, it'd be, I think, useful to those listening.
Okay, and I'm still gonna reach out to that individual, see if they're willing to have a, you know, a fuller conversation. So first, I heard some questions about school enrollment. I do want to say, we did work closely with the school department, we actually gathered information about a number of existing multifamily developments in town, which included Princeton. I think we gathered 10 different multifamily projects in town. We looked at the data of enrolled school-aged children in town over a number of years, and looking at the most current year, the trend is actually not what it once used to be for Princeton properties when that was initially developed. Right now, the current trend, based on the most recent multifamily developments in town, and what appear to be the most likely kinds of multifamily development that could result if this zoning bylaw amendment is approved, it would net approximately one school-age child for every four dwelling units for multifamily. So we know that the multifamily style and the rental, which is the most likely kind of development that would result, is about one for every four units. So we know that the school enrollment has declined over the last 10 years, it has leveled off, but there's approximately, I want to say, 500 to 560 fewer students than were previously enrolled in the school system that we currently have the physical space for. Obviously, that does not mean that the school can accommodate that delta immediately, you know, there's different programming requirements now, teacher ratios, et cetera, but we're just saying that there was physical space for, you know, more than 500 more students than are present in the school system now. I heard some information about the tax burden. That is a concern of ours as well, but not for the reasons that you think. We think the primary reason why the residential tax base has gone up, if you're an owner of a single-family dwelling, you will feel that your tax rates have gone up more than people have mentioned the 2.5%. And one of the reasons for that is, as you all probably know, the residential properties in town have appreciated far more in value over time as compared to the commercial properties. So even if nothing changed, more of the burden does get shifted onto the residents because their properties are going up faster. Part of the other issue when we looked at the draft, the where the district would be, that was, the committee, the advisory committee, the planning board was very mindful of that, and they really looked strategically to try to look at opportunities to help shore up the commercial base. So for instance, we have had double-digit vacancy rates for commercial office space for decades, I believe, and we know the trend with working remotely and hybrid work options. As these leases come up post-COVID, this is going to become a bigger problem. And what a lot of people may not know is that the valuation for commercial properties are set differently than for residential properties. Part of their valuation is not only based on the land or property value, but the income base. So if they have prolonged vacancies or if they're not fetching as good of a rate that they once used to, either they could have a devaluation of the property or it won't go up in valuation as much. Once again, that puts more of the burden on the residential tax base. So we reached out to a number of the commercial property owners, and we listened to them, and they have asked very specifically, some of them, including a portion of, say, a technology tech park east, that could be very beneficial to them. Just having one component of a multifamily housing can really help their entirety of their project. It can also lead to some additional commercial development, primarily along Littleton Road exactly. Then the Shoba Valley ski area, that's a huge opportunity to really bolster the commercial recreation opportunity that town meeting previously voted to support, and it can also provide extra amenities for the existing multifamily developments there. I do want to point out also that in addition to bolstering commercial recreation, you know, a bylaw amendment like this could lend some of the existing vacant parking areas as viable future development sites. So things are not always being as utilized as efficiently as they could be. This bylaw amendment is something that could really be a game changer in that respect, while promoting sustainability. We can make better use of existing impervious areas. And of course, this would translate into significant potential for new positive, new growth. Again, if we simply had a lot more development of single-family dwellings, while that would be new growth, that's not necessarily good new growth in terms of being a positive for the tax base. High-level looking at this, when we look at the amount of taxes collected from the multifamily developments, and you factor in the excise taxes, and we're not even factoring in secondary benefits from, say, restaurant meals taxes, it does appear, worst case, we cannot guarantee that it would at least be tax-neutral, but there's a very good opportunity that would be tax-favorable. A lot of these developments also take care of a lot of their own maintenance, they maintain a lot of their own roads, their snow removal, their trash and recycling, so in essence, that can actually help the greater tax base as well. The other thing, this is also about housing. We hear time and again that, you know, our population is aging. It has doubled, the population that's 65 years older has doubled in the last 20 years, and it's gonna double again. More and more of the people in our community now are going to be living on fixed incomes in the future. We think we owe it to our community to try to incentivize more kinds of housing, and particularly housing for our folks to be able to downsize, that are easier to maintain and will be less tax burden going forward for them. So we think this is something that we need to do regardless, just for our own community, and this bylaw amendment is something that can really make a big dent in that. So I do know that we are also trying to incentivize commercial components to these. We are not trying to have simply the multifamily housing, we're trying to bring the amenities with it, we're trying to bring a broader, better tax base, so these are all things that the advisory committee has struggled with since July. That's the short version.
Thanks. Thanks, very good condensed book, we're just proud of you. John?
Would you comment on the figure 4,000 that's thrown out as far as the potential for the overlay, you know, 4,000 units?
Oh, units. Unit capacities.
And then also the aspect that this doesn't, we don't have to put these units in.
Rights.
It could may materialize or not.
So there are a couple of things. So first, Westford is mandated to create the potential through zoning for an additional 924 dwelling units. There is no requirement that any single one of those units get built, though. Using the state's modeling methodology, I will admit, it is not, it is not accurate for Westford when you factor in that we do not have municipal sewer system as compared to other communities. It takes a lot more land area for us to get the same number of dwelling units. We have generous open space requirements. We also have some significant front yard setback requirements to most of the areas where these properties are sited, and it is true, though, that the, using the state's modeling, which is what matters for compliance, it doesn't, reality doesn't matter here, it's the state's modeling that matters for compliance. It is north of 4,000 units, and it could be close to 5,000 units. The issue, though, is to get to that sticker shock number, every single parcel within the proposed overlay would have to be developed only as multifamily housing and to the highest density possible, and it's not factoring in the typical site constraints such as severe topography, or, you know, some of these people that we've spoken to, they have an interest in being included in the district, but they just have a 10-year lease agreement that they just signed, and they're hopeful that it'll continue past that. So there's a lot of market conditions, lease agreements, that many of these sites may not be practical to develop. We know that some of them don't have adequate soils for truly high-density development, but it could make for a great opportunity for a lower-density modest development that people who took our surveys, thank you again very much, say that they want. So even if a site isn't great for a high-density development, it could still find a use, working with this bylaw, to check some of the boxes for what people say that they wanted from our surveys. So it's unrealistically high, if it were 5,000, based on the state's modeling, it's probably more like an absolute maximum of 2,500 to 3,500, and again, that assumes that every single lot gets developed fully without any, you know, commercial components. And the other thing that I'll say is if we do get, you know, something truly unexpected, because you're never going to see every single, an application submitted for every single property within the entirety of the zoning district in, say, the first six months, but if we do get some, something really unexpected, we would be the first ones advising to say, hey, maybe we should rethink this and come back to town meeting and make adjustments as needed. But right now, the committee decided, with all these various issues facing our town and our community, from the tax base, from a lack of housing inventory for not giving our seniors real choices that they want to actually downsize to, they feel that it was better to have more area for more opportunity. And I will say throughout the process, they've already halved what was on the table, so they've whittled this down, I'd say, five times to get what they're at, because they think this represents some good redevelopment opportunity, and it puts potential housing in locations that make sense for walkable, you know, opportunities, good highway access, and really can create some good housing opportunities. And some of this will actually benefit the commercial aspect as much as the residential. So we're very optimistic, this is me, Mr. Naysayer, being optimistic here, but we are also gonna be the first ones to say, if we're getting something unexpected that we don't think is good for the town, we're happy to bring it back and adjust as needed.
Based on the bylaw, whatever we get's gonna look nice.
That's some other concerns that we heard, is that we're gonna get nothing but brick buildings that may be seen in other towns, and our advisory committee, our planning consultant, they're architects, many of them, and so they came back with the first take on what they thought might be adequate for architectural standards. And our advisory committee said, thank you, but no, you didn't hear us, we want more. So they, I don't know, quadrupled the pages, and there are some very significant design standards for consideration there. So you're not going to get a massive brick building that's 200 feet long without breaking up the character, they have very specific standards in there, which I think begin on or about page 12-ish or so in the bylaw.
So thank you, and thank you, thank the committee, it's a lot of work and.
They've done a lot of work.
So can I move to recommend to approve?
You certainly can, please. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Adam and I.
Thank you very much, really appreciate your support.
To you and the committee, thank you very much, and all your hard work, I, you know, you've done an incredible job in eight months.
My staff would, they've done a lot of, a lot of work, too, and the advisory committee, they've done top-notch work. Lot of lively discussions, wouldn't you say?
Yes.
Yes, so.
If you look at documentation of any media, they're not like ours, they go to hundreds of pages.
Well, thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Review and act upon the following ballot question on May 7th, 2024 Annual Town Election Ballot pursuant to Master of Law, Chapter 99, Section 21(c), also known as Prop. Two and a Half. So question one, shall the town of Westford be allowed to assess an additional $6.8 million in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of funding municipal and school board operating expenses for the year beginning July 1st, 2024? It's a, yes, no question, I believe all we have to do is say we approve the wording, correct?
Yes, and this has been reviewed by town council. We do have until the end of March to make any adjustments, but I wanted to make sure it was before the board in due order for the warrants on May 7th.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I got a question. We don't have, it doesn't have to go to the town clerk until, what, 35 days ahead of the, and what, and if town meeting changes.
Town meeting can't change it.
They can't change this, but if they, if they don't approve the 6.8 million.
We can still bring it back, it still goes to the ballot.
I know that, and that's, that's the point, yeah, well.
So this, voting on this today sends a message to voters that you are still in support of a $6.8 million override. If for any chance this needs to be changed, we can have it on your agenda for March 26th, excuse me, 3rd, yes, March 26th.
Can we discuss this at the motions meeting, that if, if the over would fail at town meeting and passed the ballot box, we then call the town meeting.
Correct.
So I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. All in business, a certain request from the Community Behavioral Health Committee to change Westford Public Schools' representative from assistant to pretendant Courtney Moran to Director of Special Education Gerard Coughlin. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Adam and I.
I, I should have brought this up in open forum, but it sort of fits under new business, too. So there is legislation pending in the State House right now concerning hybrid meetings, and the wording of it is that it, a town may require hybrid meetings, but there are also articles pending that say that a town shall require hybrid meetings for their municipal meetings, and I would, we don't, I don't know that we need to decide this tonight, we can or not, but I'd like to direct our state rep and our state senator to support the mandatory requirement of hybrid meetings for municipal, meetings for municipal meetings as opposed to making it discretionary, I think, in terms of access to our residents and public information and being as open and transparent as possible, that all of our meetings should be hybrid, so.
So that's put in agenda for next meeting, because it's not as agenda.
Annual town meeting, though.
No, unfortunately, that's a state issue.
And we just, we do want to discuss if there's any additional costs related to that for AV equipment and anything like that, so, yeah, I'd love to discuss that.
Okay.
So all meetings?
Not just AV, I mean, staff.
Yeah, and staff to run those.
Yeah, it's usually have to have a staff to start it.
Can you talk about all meetings for all committees, all?
Well, I think we can talk about what can, you know, obviously, you know, sort of major, you know, boards and committees, like board, FinCom, planning board, ConsCom, Board of Health, most of those already are hybrid, I believe, so, but we can, we can talk about that.
Could I just add to that, that we should probably have discussion about consistency in operating policies for the meeting? So like, we have a very consistent look and feel for this, but I've been to some other meetings in which, you know, you, you can't be recognized, you, there, there's nobody paying attention to the people in the audience, when you log in, you don't know who else is on the call with you, because the view that you see is just a very dumbed-down version of Zoom, so you don't know if you're in a, in a meeting with 20 people, or you're all by yourself with the committee, you know, you can't get, you can't get the attention of the board, so I think we need to have some policies and some education for, for the residents, for the volunteers of these boards and committees to follow.
I think, okay, so in, in two weeks, let's have the discussion about supporting may or shall, and, and then longer term, if we say, if we agree to that, then longer-term work on policies.
Yeah.
And to add to that, just today, I confirmed with Rep. Barciaro and Senator Cronin that they'll be able to come to your second meeting in April.
Oh, good.
So I know a lot of people have been asking about that, that was finalized this afternoon, so I figured this was a good time to bring that up as well.
Okay, minutes for approval for release, regular session, January 9th, 2024, January 23rd, '24, 2024. Let's do that one first, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Adam and I. Executive session meeting of February 13th, 2024, not for release, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
John? Sorry, second?
Second.
John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
And then finally, our meetings, joint meetings with the Finance Committee of January 11th, 18th, 25th, and February 1st and 5th of 2024. of January 11th, 18th, 25th, and February 1st and 5th of 2024, for release. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Any board reports or updates? Okay, town manager's report.
Great, thank you. Happy to report that the town of Westford has received the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Meta Grant Award in the amount of $13,900. We received this grant about a year and a half ago as well, that we use the services of Beth Greenblatt for our investment-grade audit work. We are still working with Amoresco on that investment-grade audit. It is behind schedule. We are pushing them. We would like to accept this grant to do any sort of upgrades to our buildings. We do not know if it would be with an Amoresco or a different type of firm, but we feel that it's in the best interest to accept this grant for services related to sustainability in buildings.
Can I, can I, we know why we're falling behind with?
I would like to get more information before I share that publicly. And then, we also received from the National Association of County and City Health Officials, the 2024 MRC Operational Readiness Grant in the amount of $10,000 to be requested by the Health Department.
Is there a motion to say yes to money?
Absolutely. So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move on to contracts. New England Stormwater Management LLC for our catch basin cleaning in the amount of $68,330. Millennium Maintenance and Power sweeping for townwide street sweeping in the amount of $51,503. Lowell General Hospital for Advanced Life Support affiliation agreement, there's no dollar amount, as this is an affiliation agreement. And then the Engineering Corporation for Design of the Acton Road Culvert in the amount of $150,000, as requested by the Engineering Department.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye.
And purchase orders, ENE Security for security cameras at the fire training grounds. That's off of Forge Village to the new fire training grounds in the amount of $20,622. That comes out of that account that, for that training ground facility. For the vaccine shop for flu vaccines for the 2024 season in the amount of $25,821. And Helena Agri Interprez's LLC for grass fertilizer for town properties in the amount of $13,500.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to wave pleading of correspondence.
Is there a second?
I do.
All in favor, Chris?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. And then motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Aye.